At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let the record show, all city councilor in attendance and would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign. We have two proclamations tonight. The first, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize Council Plus as a Purple Heart city. With this proclamation, City of Council Plus Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation. The City of Council Plus and the state of Iowa has always supported its military veteran population. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, to promote patriotism, to support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure we never forget. And whereas the Council Plus metropolitan area has a large, highly decorated veteran population. And whereas Council Plus appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Therefore, I, Matthew J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Plus, does hereby proclaim the City of Council Plus as a Purple Heart city. And I encourage the citizens of the City of Council Plus to show their appreciation for the sacrifices that the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support that they have earned. Witness herein with the seal of the City of Council Plus on this 23rd day of March in the year 2015. And I'd like to present it to whoever is...
Thank you so much for your service. You're certainly welcome to make comments if you'd like to.
The only comment I would have is that we are members of the military or Purple Heart. These gentlemen are here with me. This is Terry Minaric. He was wounded three times in Vietnam. This is Don Kemper. He was wounded in the Battle of the Bulge in World War II. And my name's Jerry Elly. I was also wounded three times in Vietnam. I'd like to urge any of you that have family members or neighbors that have received the Purple Heart that we would warmly welcome them into our organization. The chapter that we're in is Eastern Nebraska and Southwest Iowa. And right now, we've got 134 members. They're not all active. Some are getting older and we need some of the younger folks to come in. But that's about it. Thank you. Yeah, we meet at the DAV over in Omaha, 45th and half.
Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Certainly can. Yep.
Why don't you come up here and you can get a picture with the entire council if you... If you just stand up front, we can probably...
Stand in the middle. We'll see what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, my chair is incredibly low.
Have you got everybody's back behind us a little?
Does it look good, wasn't it?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Our second proclamation, we oftentimes have the opportunity to use city proclamations for public awareness efforts. And so, this second proclamation is designating March as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. City of Council Plus Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second most common cause of cancer deaths for cancers that affect both men and women in the United States. And whereas one in 20 islands will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer in their lifetime. And whereas the vast majority of colon cancer deaths can be prevented through proper screening and early detection. And the five-year survival rate of individuals is 90% when cancer is detected at an early stage. And whereas only 40% of colorectal cancer patients have their cancers detected at an early stage. And whereas if the majority of the people in the United States age 50 and older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, the death rate from this disease could be dramatically reduced. And whereas colorectal cancer is preventable, treatable, beatable, in most cases. And finally, whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Plus, does proclaim March 2015 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Council Plus and urge all citizens to take due note of this observance with the signature of my signature and the seal of the City of Council Plus affects this 23rd day of March. So, again, if you're over the age of 50, make sure that you get screenings for colon cancer. So, all right, moving on to the public hearings. This is a time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-82 authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an electrical easement in connection with the North 28th Street Stormwater Pump Station project. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's...
Ah, yes. Not to the power class, but I had just opened my old neighbor to come by the house the other day.
Is it in regards to this issue, sir?
Well, I heard it over on the baseball field.
No, you can speak at the end of the meeting. This is in particular in relation to this particular item, but the meeting is gonna go fast and you're welcome to speak at the end of the meeting.
The reason I came was because of this, and then the house down there by the river front.
All right.
Did that not be held in mind, open on the river front?
Yes. And so, you say you're wanting to speak in regards to the 28th Street Pump Station?
No, I just have questions about...
All right, okay.
...of classes.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else who would wish to speak in regards to the 28th Street Stormwater Pump Station Anyone from the council? I guess, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion by the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-83 authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed and any documents necessary to transfer the interest in city property as set herein. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Is proof, or have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in regards to this issue? What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on first reading, ordinance 6229, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.040 by rezoning properly generally described as lying between I-480 and Avenue B, list of existing North 40th Street, commonly referred to as Rivers Edge subdivision, by rezoning proposed Block 1 from R-4 High Density Multifamily Residential District to R-4 High Density Multifamily Residential with a PR Plan residential overlay and rezoning proposed Blocks 2 and 6 from R-4 High Density Multifamily Residential and A-2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to R-4 High Density Multifamily Residential with a PR Plan residential overlay as defined in Chapter 15.11 and 15.28 by rezoning proposed Block 7 from R-4 Density Multifamily Residential District to C-4 Commercial District as defined in Chapter 15.17 by rezoning proposed Outlots A and B from R-4 High Density Multifamily Residential to A-2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District, the property as defined in Chapter 15.05, setting a public hearing for April 6, 2015 at 7:00 PM.
Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00 PM on April 6, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only to say that I, my opinion on this is, you know, a lot of good work has gone into this whole series of ordinances and resolutions into the development of this building project. And my concern is the prioritization of this project ahead of completing the redevelopment on West Broadway. Simply that.
And then, I'd like to point out, for those that are in regular attendance or regularly watch, because we have Memorial Day coming up, if you heard the motion, it was for the April 6 meeting. Typically, we meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Beginning in April, we'll meet on the first and third until Memorial Day so that we can spread those meetings out with a meeting in between. So, if you need to adjust your calendars, we will be on the first and the third Mondays from April and May. So, any other discussion? And sir, I believe you said you wanted to address this issue?
My son?
You want to address this issue?
I thought the river front...
Yes.
Yes, I had a few...
Please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
I don't know. My name's Tim Page and I live at 1029 North Eighth Street. And I don't know all the facts, but the way the river front is now, who paid for that? The taxpayers? To have it fixed? Over the last three or four years to fix it.
Are you talking in regards to Hannafin Park or to the levee? Or I'm not sure exactly what you're speaking...
I'm talking about where, you know, where you go towards Omaha, right there on the right, that thing you guys have been working on for three or four years where they hold all the concerts?
That Riverfront Park was paid for from a variety of sources. State of Iowa grants, Great Places grants, REAP grants, a significant contribution from the Iowa West Foundation, and a portion of it from taxpayers.
Could I have a copy of all that?
If you would stop by the Council Plus Parks Department tomorrow, they can give you that detail.
Okay. The only reason I'm saying this because I thought when that was built, it was gonna be built for the people, for the park and, you know, concerts like we hold down there.
Right.
And now you want to turn it in these tall buildings that are only 26 acres.
The park will remain as it is. This is on what they call the dry side of the levee. The park's on the wet side of the levee, the west side of the levee. This is the old...
Are you still gonna hold concerts there?
Yes. We have one Memorial Day weekend.
It's over on the other side.
It's on the other side of that?
That park will remain as it is with some improvements to it, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. No bother.
Do we have a motion?
Um, yes. I motion, I think Nate seconded.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign.
Aye.
And for those at home, that vote was four to one. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions, Resolution adopting a Plan Residential Development Plan and granting preliminary plan approval for a seven lot subdivision to be known as Rivers Edge subdivision. Resolution 15-85 adopting a Plan Residential Development Plan proposed Blocks 1, 2, and 6, Rivers Edge subdivision. And Resolution 15-86 granting preliminary plan approval for a seven block subdivision to be known as Rivers Edge subdivision, being part of the Government Lot 3 of the Southwest Quarter, Southwest Quarter of Section 28-75-44, and part of Government Lot 1 of the Northwest Quarter, Northwest Quarter of Section 33-75-44, and lots 174 through 182, and lots 194 through 201, Twin City Gardens along with all vacated alleys inclusive, and the portion of North 40th Street lying south of the southerly right of way line of Avenue B and north of the state right of way, all in the City of Council Plus Potawatomi County.
Motion to approve Resolution 7A1 and A2.
Second.
Discussion.
The, you know, I forgot to mention on the other one, for those people at home who might want to know a little bit more information on what's going on on the dry side of the levee down at Rivers Edge, embedded into the text on 6A is a website that you can click on and it will take you directly to the plan so you can see everything that's been drafted so far.
Oh, I don't have computers.
You can stop by the Parks Department, or Community Development. I guess Parks Department's not appropriate, the Community Development Department.
Where is that located?
Across the street below the fire station.
And if you go to the library and have someone assist you to do a search through the newspaper archives, there's actually some pretty good articles and photographs as well.
As well as the internet there and for people to see, it's a fantastic mix of commercial, of various types of residential, a lot of things that there is a massive demand for, particularly among retiring baby boomers and the up and coming millennials. It's fantastic and I recommend everybody check it out.
And, you know, this is a project I'm really excited about because it will eventually add a lot of money to the tax rolls and we need that. In order to keep our levy low, we need to keep adding more properties, but it is gonna be a really nice development. And I know, you know, concerns over prioritization. The nice part about this project is we have a developer ready, willing, and able to do the project. And that's really, you know, the biggest part of any plan is having somebody willing to execute it and be able to afford to do it and have the ability to do it. So, I'm really excited about it.
And the additional businesses and residents to our community will certainly have a huge impact on our economic growth.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign.
Aye.
And again, four to one for those at home.
Resolution 15-84 confirming the appointment of Daniel Jordett in the position of Director of Finance with the City of Council Plus and providing the wage and benefit package offered to him. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Resolution 15-87 authorizing the mayor to execute a certified local government grant award contract to undertake an intensive level survey and evaluation program for a potential residential historic district in the South 8th Street area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did, I noticed some representatives...
If you want to speak, you're certainly welcome to. If you're just here to observe, you're certainly welcome to observe, so, all right. Any discussion from the council?
Well, I'd actually like, they're very modest out there, and so I'll embarrass them for a moment. The three individuals from the South Eighth area, from the Bayless West neighborhood there, have been among the biggest supporters and the ones putting in dozens, if not hundreds, of hours towards this fantastic project, this partnership between a grant that the city applied for with significant help from you to the federal government and then the city contribution being the labor that you and a few other folks are putting into this project to create the fourth historic residential district. And you really are to be commended for all of the efforts you're putting into this. It's really a lot of unsung heroes here, and so, thank you. Yeah, having looked over the packet and seen the amount of bureaucracy and the amount of hurdles that have to be overcome and the amount of time and dedication that you all have put into this, I only wish it weren't so burdensome on folks like you trying to do something not only for your neighborhood but also the community. So, I want to echo Mr. Watson's comments and keep up the good work. Thank you.
And what's interesting to me is this is an opportunity for the group that's working on this to capture a lot of information, historical information, that otherwise may be lost. And Nate, you went through a litany of it this afternoon and it's, I think it's just a great opportunity for those who may not be aware of the historical significance of the homes and the people who live there. It's a great opportunity for them to learn. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Bruce?
One thing I like, 864 McKenzie Avenue.
Bruce Kelly.
Bruce Kelly.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like to thank these people for saving these houses and make sure that they are and not turn into apartments and everything like that and keep these grand homes the way they should be. I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Resolution 15-88 authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract with Hyphen X Corporation for the city's yard waste disposal. Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Resolution 89, 15-89 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Compass Utility LLC for the Lower Bennett Rehab Phase 6 Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to point out that this will be the sixth phase of the Lower Bennett reconstruction of the streets and most of these haven't been reconstructed, well, in about three generations. And last time, we were voting on a lot of streets in the South First area. And just so folks know, the streets that, and a great deal, if not most, if not all of this comes from your local option sales tax, it has included recreating entirely Arnold Avenue, Adrian, Milky, Robin, Lillian, Beal, Lake, the rest of Arnold, Wynwood Circle, Wedgewood Drive, Windsor Circle, Bonham Avenue. And this particular phase now will include reconstruction of portions of Wynwood Circle and Wedgewood Drive that haven't already been reconstructed. And as well, we'll continue our project of correcting an unfortunate oversight for a few decades of when sidewalks were not required in certain building in our community. This will correct that and put sidewalks there so that people, children can get to school buses safely and families can be out and have a safe way to have a good quality of life. It's a fantastic project that you pay for with your local option sales tax. And I think you just need to know about that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both the same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, 8A1 and 3 through 10, and 8B salvage charge permits. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, she did pull it out? Okay, I didn't hear that, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign.
Motion to postpone, 8A2.
Second.
Discussion.
I really want to encourage the owner of this particular establishment, Padanka Ronx Bar and Grill at 2327 South 24th, to take this opportunity to come to the next council meeting. There've been a fair number of rather serious concerns with police calls throughout the year, not just in warmer months or holidays, and give them an opportunity to talk with us and perhaps the police chief about what they might be doing to alleviate this problem so that, speaking for myself, I might be in a position to consider voting for their license renewal. And at the moment, rather dubious about doing that, but I want to give them an opportunity to explain how they're going to fix things if they are.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign. Madam Clerk, any requests from citizens to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience? Don?
Don Angeroff, Tans Doublefield Drive. Couple things on 7D, changing the company that's going to be picking up the yard waste. What does that do to the garbage bills?
Same, my understanding is it's the same schedule for the contracted amount, the previous company is no longer in business.
Okay, so the garbage bills are not changing in any way?
No.
Okay. The next thing, I'm here as the president of Potawatomi County Landlord Association. We've got a few members that are a little concerned. We were told when we were negotiating and working out this rental inspection that that would not start until August and that before that, we were promised some classes that were going to be offered. What about this clean sweep that's been taking place for the last week over here west of Bayless Park where the city is going in and inspecting rentals, which is a little different than what we've been told? And so, we have some members that are in concern about this.
Not aware of that. I'll find out for you. If you'd like to call my office tomorrow, I'll have an answer for you. It did not, the full-scale rental inspection program employees have not been hired yet.
Yes, I understand that.
And we always had a rental inspector, and so it doesn't mean that she stops doing her job until August, but...
No, but I mean, it's just sort of funny that there's blanketing a large area all at once, which is different than just sending out a notice to landlord here and there. It's a little different.
It's based on areas and use. It's also based on complaints and so, folks who are honestly filling out the forms under the current standards, which... which actually will get in about two dozen ways more advantageous for you in August, when that goes into effect, have nothing to worry about. It's the current law. You already self-inspect. If folks are getting caught doing things they shouldn't be doing, well, then.
It's not a matter of being caught. It's a matter of being city inspected sort of ahead of the schedule we were, you know, presented.
I don't believe that's the case because, again, we haven't hired that staff.
True.
And it's somewhat ironic to me that members of your association would be suing the city for not doing their job and now appear protesting because they're doing their job. And I find that somewhat strange, to be honest with you.
You're talking about totally different things, but.
Well, I don't think we are.
Well, it is costing the taxpayer money to defend against the lawsuits that your organization, folks, a part of it, have filed about the current program. No lawsuits about the change, but the current program that many folks said they wanted to keep are suing claiming that it was horribly wrong at the same time and costing the taxpayer money to defend. So I'd echo the mayor. It is confusing. I wish there'd be some consistency as to what folks want or what they're against, rather than conveniently being against things at one time and for it another.
I don't think the lawsuit was against that type of inspection. It was about other procedures. But that's not to be handled here.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Anybody from the council? Bruce?
Bruce Kelly, eight six four McKenzie Avenue. Behind the Elks Club, I don't know if any of you have ever been out there and stuff. We have a slupon back there. How long is those slupons supposed to be in existence when the building that it was draining for is done being built?
In today's DNR-regulated water quality environment, they're not called slupons anymore. They're called detention ponds.
Okay, whatever.
And typically, those detention ponds are designed so that they will drain. They're there to retain water a length of time to allow the sediment in the water to settle, and then the water to vent out into the sewer system. And so I'm not sure exactly as to the design of that pond. One of the things that I do know is when there was a major project in town, and I can't remember for sure exactly which one it was, but that area was mined for the dirt. And so I don't know if the contractor created a non-draining detention area so that water wouldn't run out. I'm really not familiar, but I can find out for you if you give me a call.
Okay, one of the things I was worried about, stuff like that, mostly when we do rent the facility out, we have kids going over there because they hear the frogs and everything. And I know it belongs to one of the, like, real estate company owns it and stuff like that. And it's not fenced in. And they did come in last year and cut the trees out of it. And it took me forever to get them out there, to get a dead deer out of this, out of it. And like, that's what, and then when it does drain, they don't maintain around where it's supposed to be drained. And the city doesn't maintain it either, which is, it's not on their.
Not the city's property.
And stuff. And we fight with them and everything. And I got to say, Virgil Anderson came over and cleaned it out for us. I couldn't get the people that owned it, the property, to come out because they said, "We've been out there once, and we're not coming out again." And that's when it's tearing our parking lot is a mess because it lends up on top of our parking lot out there. And now our parking lot is crumbling apart.
Who's the owner?
Well, that's what I hated to say, you know. I don't know who actually does own it. Fairway owns their property. The people that own the businesses in that building each own their.
I had to go through.
Each own their own building and would pay a CAM fee for common area maintenance. And Virgil was the person who did the excavation. And I don't know if that's on his property. I don't know if it's on Elks' property. So I hate to.
It belongs to one of our major real estate companies.
Well, the.
Because I.
Those are condo, well, some are rented, some are condos, so.
I'm talking about, it drains off of the, where the Dennis down into this area and stuff, behind it and stuff. Like I said, we got mosquitoes.
Dennis owned their property.
We got mosquito problems. We got kids and stuff. I mean, we're out there yelling at kids to keep out. There's no fencing, nothing.
Yeah, I will look into it for you. But if it was designed for that project, it is a true detention area. And our detention areas typically don't have fencing around them, but their depth is such that it shouldn't be a risk to people. The Dennis actually owns his property. So, again, that.
No, it's just something I wanted to bring up. And then one of the other things, I read in the newspaper, I know where our budget, you guys figured that out and everything like that. And there was, I heard there was, there might be a shortfall in it and stuff like that. And I read about buying a new compactor for the, to compact our trash down there and everything.
Two, what they call proprietary businesses that the city runs. One is the sanitary sewer system. And you saw the fees go up on that last week. It's not paid for with property taxes. It's paid for by assessing a fee for usage. The other proprietary business is Refuge Collection.
Refuge.
And I get this look again, shaking his head, but that's exactly how it's paid for. And the Refuge Collection is paid for by garbage fees. And that is its own separate business. And they also run the recycling center. And so the recycling center and the garbage collection fees then are used to run those operations. It's not paid for by tax dollars.
So this isn't going to be a talk, it'd be coming out of their business?
It's coming out of their business at the recycling center. And the reason they're doing that is it costs money to ship bales of cardboard and paper. And these new compactors will compact it tighter, allow them to get more on the semi-trailer and cut back on some of the shipping expense.
What I was looking at, is the city going to have to pay for it? Or are they going to pay for it?
The.
New compactor.
It will come out of the refuge fund, so it's not, doesn't come from taxpayer.
It's already something that's already been collected for, okay.
Now, again, the individual residents of the city pay a garbage fee. So if you say, are the city residents going to pay for it? Yes, they are, but it's not coming out of tax dollars. It's coming.
What I meant, what I was worried about is, is it, was it coming out of all of our general fund?
No.
And we didn't, and that's where.
And you're right, the general fund budget's a little short.
The question I wanted to get cleared up because, you know, you got a machine, maybe it's not packing as good. And we got a deficit, you know, we don't have what we think we have coming in. Is it, how long is it going to take to recapture that $350,000 versus if we kept the same machine going for another few more years until we could afford to buy it?
I don't have an honest answer for it, so.
So that's what I was.
I could get that information, but I'd be misleading if I gave you some timeframe.
You know, that's what I was worried about. But if it's not going to raise our garbage and residue right now, then it's not, it's not a tax burden problem, it's, and stuff. I know I talked to Nate last time about it. And that's what I was trying to get. Because if we were, or I had a shortfall and we didn't have it in the general fund, we shouldn't be buying it.
And I remember your point. And I understand what you're saying. It's just, in this case, we can't, that money is separate. So, you know, those, as the mayor says, the two proprietary things we do, those pay for themselves. And so if we, if we take the money out, if we raid the money to pay for other things, first of all, that's really bad budgeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
And secondly, that would be a very clever way to get all sorts of money from other programs, to raise taxes through the back door. And that's just not proper budgeting. And so honest budgeting, that money stays with that money. And it's, they make a small profit generally with that business. It runs itself. And they think this is going to make it more efficient so that they can continue to, so that rates don't go up.
As long as the rates, you know, that's what I was.
It should save money. It's the cost of, it's the cost of labor and space.
Okay, that, that's a different. You know, I figured if we're running the place down there and we have, and it's coming out of our general fund, and we don't have the money to really pay for it.
No, it's separate, so.
So that, that makes a difference.
I hear what you're saying.
That's like, and the county got into it about putting in a security system and tell everybody they didn't have the money to pay for it and raised everybody taxes.
Thank you.
And I'm still trying to find out when they have meetings down there.
Where?
For the parks. The one that's in.
The commission, the Parks Commission?
He said that he thought they had one.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have internet?
Do you have the agenda or the meeting schedule?
The only thing I could find was on Fairmont, and they only meet every three months.
Well, they had two months. Oh, excuse me.
You're talking about the Parks Commission, right? The Parks Board?
Yeah.
I think maybe, Marcy, you have access to that information, right?
Sure.
You want to get with Marcy tomorrow? And she'll be able to let you know what the schedule is?
It's also on the city website, under agendas. You just dig down.
You can, you can sign up to get an email or a text message if you do one of those two things. Or, you know, the reason why it was three months they didn't have a meeting is, I understand it from their minutes in January or February. They didn't have any.
Well, they got two boards. One's the Fairmont Board that only meets every three months.
I don't think there's, there's.
No.
There's no official board. There might be Friends of Fairmont Park or something like that.
They meet here in your, in the chamber.
But I think you, you're asking about the Parks Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's, the schedule's online.
And every time I try to get ahold of Mr. Foster, he's either gone or out of the office. I still have a tree up there at eight twenty-five that needs to be trimmed. As, like I said, it was three and a half. Now it's going on four years.
Just leave a message at the desk. Larry's been on vacation for the last ten days.
I've already talked a lot about it. And we've been arguing about it for three years.
He'll be back tomorrow.
Okay. I know he'll be back tomorrow.
Anybody else? Anybody from the council? Again, I want to remind you that beginning next month, we go to the first and third Mondays of the month, for the month of April and the month of May. I'd gotten some calls in regards to two things. And when Bruce mentioned the security system at the courthouse, it reminded me of one, which I've gotten people that have called, people that have actually left the courthouse and come over to City Hall to express their displeasure about the new security system at the courthouse. That is a county facility. And as such, then, is overseen by the County Board of Supervisors. And so that is who those questions should be directed to. Today, I received my first call on the potential eminent domain that would occur with the new Council Plus School District expansion of their athletic field. Again, assessing blame on the city. I just don't think people realize that when you vote in elections, you vote for three different major taxing authorities. You vote for the City Council, which is the lowest tax collector in the city of Council Plus. You should also vote for the County Supervisors because they're the second highest tax collector ahead of the city in the Council Plus School District, who I believe is talking about lowering their levy. But prior to lowering their levy, is the highest collector of property taxes. And so the Council Plus School District